Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the special meeting of the Citizens Law Enforcement Review Board. Our first roll call, Pastor Spriggs.
Oh, excuse me. Eileen Delaney. Mary Ann Pintar. Pastor Robert Spriggs Jr. is here. Dr. Arlie Brown. Andrew Hayes.
Present.
Nadia King Ayew. Bonnie Keane.
Here.
Thank you. Arianna Federico Mondragon. Tim Ware here. And G.I. Wilson.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, we have a quorum. Thank you. Couple of housekeeping notes. Board members, please remember to turn your mic off after you're done speaking. And those of you that are here in person, if you'd like to speak, you can get a slip out outside and bring it to Nora since she will take it for you. Thank you. Okay. Our first agenda item is a presentation from San Diegans for Justice, presented by Co-Chair Andrea St. Julian. Hi, come on up, yes.
Alrighty, so I believe I have a PowerPoint. And how would I work that? Oh, that sounds really good. Uh, how would I turn it on? Is it on? Okay, well, I'll take this off and hopefully you can hear me a little bit better. Are you ready for me to begin? Thank you, thank you so much. First, I do really want to thank you for giving us this time. I very much appreciate it. I wanted to be here in person to speak with you, to answer any questions that you have about, for one, the CLERB report that we submitted a year or so ago, and also the recent letter that we that we sent. So our subject today is amending the ordinance for CLERB. And could we have the next slide, please? So CLERB's mission is to increase public confidence and the accountability of county peace officers. And without public trust, there just can't be confidence or accountability. And trust and accountability, when the community has that, that's what keeps communities safe. All right? So when you're looking at what amendments should be made to the ordinance, I think the real the first thing to think about is really, is this going to engender trust within the community? And yes, and as the little, yes, underneath it says, that's a little symbol showing that trust is built. That is something that you really have to work at, and the foundation of building trust is really going to be this ordinance. Next slide, please. Community input builds trust. And San Diegans for Justice got quite a bit of it in determining what suggestions we were going to make for the for the ordinance amendment. We have a number of community exchanges. We've had many over the years where we have community members tell us what do they need to see in terms of community oversight of of police? All of this information we took and we helped, we took it and gave it to the expert that we had create the CLERB report. And she took her expertise and combined that with that information to complete the report that we gave you a year ago. And if there are any board members or anyone in the audience who'd like to see the results of all of our community exchanges and what community members really thought was important in terms of community oversight of police, you can go to that website, which was created by UCSD Professor Patrick Anderson. Next slide, please. So this is a really important one. Having independent counsel builds trust. And this was an issue that was extremely important to the community. And I know from a different vantage point, that takes some understanding. So I want to really explain this one. County Council represents both the law enforcement and it also represents CLERB at this point. Try to explain that to a layperson. That you have the same attorney representing people who or entities that are in, to some degrees, could be on opposite sides. There is no layperson that is going to understand that, no matter how much you try to say, oh, but don't worry, there's an ethical wall. Okay? And I also want to make it very clear, this has nothing to do with the current county council. It has nothing to do with the deputy county council that's assigned to you. In fact, I've I've only heard wonderful things about Cherie and that she is very supportive of CLERB. And no one is denying that. But if you look at two things, one, the community is never going to understand that. And two, county councils and deputy county councils change. And although you may have a very supportive county council right now, that could easily change in the future. So it's not just about the fact that you all work well with your county council. It's about the fact that the community needs to trust that you have appropriate and independent counsel. So this is something that's extremely important and is not in any way, shape or form a slight on county council or your specific assigned council. Next slide, please. Independence from other government bodies builds trust. The more CLERB can make its own decisions, the more the community is going to trust CLERB and going to trust its recommendations. And a few of the examples I have are CLERB should choose its own executive director, of course, with approval by the county. CLERB in conjunction with community members should choose its own board members, and that's really important. Community members hate the fact that the county chooses the board members. They do not trust that at all. There should be a panel of community members in conjunction with some some CLERB members who nominate board members for the board. And as detailed in the letter and also in the report, CLERB has to have an adequate number of board members, staff and funding. You're going to be adding a lot of additional duties through this new amendment. And you need to have enough, excuse me, board members. You need to have enough board members to be able to carry that work out. You need to have enough staff and you need to have enough funding. So that's going to be really important, too. Next slide, please. This is a really big one. I don't know if you all noticed this, but in the amended ordinance, it only gave CLERB certain authority. It didn't give them any mandatory duties. And that does not allow the community to hold you accountable because you're not required to do anything under this ordinance. There is not one thing that you are mandated to do. You have the authority to do it, but not a mandate to do it. And that is, that is simply not going to work. There should be certain things that you are mandated to do. For example, you should be required to do a a full and robust investigation of deaths or serious physical injury. The list could go on. You can make it as long or as short as you feel you need to make it, but there really need to be some mandatory duties. And next slide, please. So, as I said, robust investigation of all serious complaints, and that can be defined in a way that that works well for everyone. Periodic unannounced visits to detention facilities, that should definitely be a mandatory duty. And you really need to list some mandatory audits. You're adding the audit function. There should be some basic auditing that you are required to do. In the same way with the pattern and practice investigations, there should be certain invest pattern and practice or certain triggers that will require you to do certain pattern and practice investigations. Next slide, please. So expanded jurisdiction and authority will build both trust and accountability. We really feel strongly about the first bullet point on this, that CLERB should have jurisdiction over investigators employed by the district attorney's office. When you have holes in oversight and community oversight, the community doesn't trust that because things can slip through the cracks when you have holes. And from the community's perspective, that's that's a pretty big hole. You should definitely have the ability to investigate wrongdoings that you discover during an investigation. I mean, a community member can simply can't understand that you're you're undertaking an investigation. You find some, you find out potential wrongdoing that has nothing to do with the complaint that you're working on, but you can't investigate that? You know, that really should be a part of the amended ordinance as well. Again, you should have the authority to conduct pattern and practice investigations without the filing of a complaint. And CLERB should also have the ability to to investigate allegations of domestic violence without the filing of a complaint. And this is something that's really pretty important to community members. I and and I learned that at the very first forum that we had this afterward, this this woman came up to me and and she ran a domestic violence shelter. And she said, we have so many women who have suffered domestic violence at the hands of a law enforcement officer. They have absolutely nowhere to turn, nowhere. They cannot report it anywhere. They're just simply too afraid. And so I think that that's something that's really important to add as well. Next slide. A simple complaint procedures build trust. There is no reason to get a wet signature on a complaint. That is simply a barrier that prevents people from filing complaints. They do not need to be signed under penalty of perjury. Again, that is a huge barrier because the population that you're dealing with in in filing complaints, their lives have been peppered with incidents of someone trying to trip them up or catch them in some kind of legal way. And they read that they have to sign this under penalty of perjury. The first thing they think about is, oh, if I accidentally get something wrong, they're going to come after me and try to put me in jail for perjury. That may sound crazy to you, but those are the, that's the kind of life that the people who are filing complaints lead. And so there's no reason to to add that. I do want to add one thing that I can't believe I forgot to put on this list, but I I became almost apoplectic when I read that at some point there was a requirement that in signing a complaint, the complainant gave up a right to subpoena officers. I I think the top of my head almost came off. To to require someone to give up a right in order to file a complaint is not just a barrier. I would say it is unconscionable. There shouldn't be anything like that in a complaint. Next slide, please. Alrighty, robust investigations. Again, these are just a few of the things in the letter, but and one of the things I also put in the letter is that you really need to define investigation. Because what some people call an investigation, other people call merely a review. And you can have different levels of investigation depending on the seriousness of the complaint. But serious complaints should be should require a full investigation that that requires obtaining original source material, not just getting material from others who have researched it and and got that gotten that material. So you can have different levels, but you really need to have a definition for a robust investigation, and that should be followed. And then there are just a couple of other suggestions there as as well. Next slide, please. Timeliness builds accountability. If you can't get those complaints in a timely manner, if you can't get those reports and personnel records in it in in a really timely manner, that's going to slow your investigation, as you know, and that is not going to help you. And those timelines should be spelled out in your in your ordinance. It should say that when you ask for a document, you know, from the city or from the county or from anybody, that they got 10, that they've got 10 days or 15 days, whatever you think is appropriate, that they've got a particular amount of time to give that to you and that there are consequences if they don't give it to you. Next slide, please. So this is another one that may be a little difficult in the beginning. But independence of thought builds trust. You all are board members because you are the ones to make the decision on whether the facts show that the complaint should be sustained or not. When you have an investigator, and again, I understand you have fantastic investigators, and it is nothing against any of the investigators that you have. But when you have the investigator give you an opinion as to the disposition of a case, you basically set up a barrier to not only changing that, but you set up a situation where the investigator's opinion can be used against you. So what if, what if you, what if an investigator says, no, I don't think we should sustain this, and you all decide differently? You say, okay, I'm going to decide this. What if they take some kind of an appeal or legal action based on that? What is the first thing that attorney is going to do? Oh, the investigator didn't think it should be sustained? You're undercutting your own ability to make a decision and make that decision stick. And also, there's, just from a perception standpoint, it makes it look as if, if you agree with the investigator too often, that you're really just rubber stamping that. And it and I'm sure it's entirely not true, but that's the, that is the perception that it gives off. I don't think that having the investigator give an opinion can be that helpful to you because you are looking at all of this information for yourselves and making your own decisions. So the investigator's opinion should really not have much to do with what you're deciding anyway. But it makes a real difference in how the 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 community views you when you have the investigator make that decision. Uh, next slide, please. Transparency, oh, that's so important. That really builds trust and accountability. And the, and this is just a bit of mine. Everything that can be made public must be made public. Every single thing, and as easily and as readily as possible, and it should be on your website. You know, nothing is too small to make public, okay? And some examples of things that should be made public is, you know, aggregated information, because again, there are, you know, officers and 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 other peace officers have rights where not everything can be published, but you can aggregate that data without deciding, you know, without divulging who the particular officer was. And you can publish that data of case outcomes, and certainly everything with audits should be published. There is one part in there where I believe that the definition of confidentiality was expanded. And maybe I can talk to Cherie at some point about that. But the definition of confidentiality should never be expanded. It should be only what is required by state, by 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 state law. Next slide, please. So, um, uh, the ordinance provisions build accountability. And I want to say ordinance because, and I don't know if I let you all know, I'm an attorney, and putting something in the rules and regulations is not the same as putting it in your ordinance. The the rules and regulations, you know, you think, you know, you do need to follow them, but they don't have the force of law than an ordinance does. So merely putting things into the rules and regulations is really not sufficient. Because if there is a battle, particularly a battle between the ordinance and the rules, the ordinance is going to win out. And so to make it explicit in the ordinance is extremely important, not just place it in the rules. We have made some recommendations in our letter that maybe, you know, you all can do on your own, that the the county board of supervisors may be able to do, and some things that the voters may be able to do. We would ask that even if there are some things that only voters can do, that you recommend to the board, that the board place that on the next ballot. Next slide, please. So my favorite part, questions. I would love to take any questions from the board about how we came to make these suggestions or any questions that you have.
Thank you. First, we're going to go to public comments.
I have at least four requests to speak for in person. First, we'll go to Jaffrey Schmidt. Next, we'll go to Paloma, Paloma Serna.
Hi, my name is Paloma Serna. My daughter Elisa Serna died November 11, 2019, at the Los Kalinianas Jail. And so I'm here to speak before the board regarding how it is very important for the separation of CLERB with the San Diego Sheriff, because it is true that what is being presented before you, that transparency is very, very important, even back in, I don't know if it was 2019 or 2020, Yusef Miller had came before the board asking for you to do a second review on my daughter's case. And so even with that, that brings me to believe that there might be some type of, you know, with the connection with the San Diego Sheriff, that maybe her case wasn't reviewed properly. So I do ask for a separation between the two and that everything that is presented to you guys, that it is brought before the public, it is very important to build that trust again. You know, I even called, excuse me, emailed the board regarding video evidence, if the board had seen the evidence. And I just received an email stating that they seen everything, which I don't know which is what. And so also, too, I just, I beg you guys to please really put your heart into what was said today about the separation and being really transparent before the community. I used to be a San Diego resident here. And so, um, please, um, hear us out. You know, I thank you for looking back at my daughter's case. And I really appreciate giving me this time to speak before you. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Sabrina Weddle.
Hello, my name is Sabrina Weddle, Saxon Rodriguez's older sister. Nice to see you guys in public and not through Zoom. You know, I'm just here to say what I've been saying for the last couple of months and since 2020, 2021, when my brother died, but transparency would be very much appreciated. I just recently actually got the sheriff's report, but to get the, you know, CLERB's report and what they they found, especially seeing how you guys came to the conclusion that the sheriff's department didn't do their job properly. They didn't check my brother at 60 minutes, but they checked him at 65, and those five minutes costed my brother his life. So transparency and the separation of the two would definitely be very much appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Tom Packard.
My name's Tom Packard, and I'm a member of Showing Up for Racial Justice North County. I'd like to particularly support the San Diegans for Justice proposed amendments in the jurisdictional scope and power section, especially those regarding CLERB investigating any potential wrongdoings, unannounced visits, data from the departments on case outcomes and other matters that are subject of audits, CLERB having direct access to department reports and information systems, and CLERB authority to conduct pattern and practice and investigations without a complaint. These are feasible and sensible recommendations. Thanks for your attention.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to Yusef Miller.
Good evening. My name is Yusef Miller. I'm with the North County Equity and Justice Coalition, the Saving Lives in Custody Campaign, and I support wholeheartedly the San Diego Californians for Justice and Andrea St. Julian's presentation here was spot on, and the whole report is absolutely thorough in its things that we need to really strongly consider. From the community aspect, the two things that we lack most, and throughout the county, you will hear people say that the CLERB of over years, they lack two things, muscle and teeth. Muscle is the boldness and intrusiveness to go into these investigations and hold people accountable, the the actual authority to go in and do things. But this authority is not well defined, and we need, as Andrea St. Julian just said, more definition on what authority is, and that needs to be outlined in public. Teeth, teeth is the ability to make someone accountable or any entity accountable. And we want to avoid with this accountability, with this muscle and teeth, avoid the so what aspect of investigation. For example, CLERB investigated this in this wrongdoing, but so what? Nothing will come from it. This is the community's opinion. This is the community's feeling. And we want to change that culture because we are here, although we've been speaking up monthly for over two years now, we're supportive of CLERB. We want CLERB to to change and evolve for the better, but we are supporters of CLERB. We actually consider ourselves sort of CLERB members. We've been here for so long. But but this is the type of things that we want to see evolve from from this audit and audit from this report from Californians for Justice. The duties need to be clearly outlined. And as said before, what should be public, what can be public should be public, and we should be intentional and active in making transparency for the public. We need to see that emboldens us. And with this transparency comes a a a project or campaign of spreading the word. The community needs to know there's been reforms. Community needs to know that complaints are will be handled different or in a different way so that they can have more confidence in complaining. We all know, even before you were in this stage that you are now, you all know the the times where you heard, oh, why report to the cops? It's not, it's not going to go anywhere. Or why report on your lawyer? It's not going to go anywhere. We need to change that perception, perspective in the community. So I just want to say that we wholly support Andrea St. Julian and Californians for Justice. The report was thorough, and it needs to be taken seriously. This is something that the community is watching. The community is the ones that couldn't be here who are online, and the people just couldn't be here at all. They're all watching to see what CLERB does with this information. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Schmidt?
My name is Jennifer Schmidt. Gilbert Gill was my father. He passed or he died on Valentine's Day, 2022 in Vista Jail, and it was the first body that you guys got to go to was his. It would just been approved three hours before he passed. And transparency, nobody's accountable for the medical staff. They can do whatever they want to do, and that's not fair. They can treat them however they want. They're not accountable. The deputies are under qualified immunity. They don't get in trouble. And it is so what? People are like, so what? What did CLERB say? Something has to change, and it needs to be done differently. Families are hurting. I don't know what happened to my dad, and it just needs to change. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Sales? Is Robin Sales, yes?
Hi, everyone. Glad to see you in person. It's been over two and a half years that we've been coming to your meetings, so I appreciate that. I am speaking today as a supporter of the revisions to the CLERB rules and regulations suggested by San Diegans for Justice. While CLERB has a 30-year history of citizen oversight, and I'd like to see that changed to community oversight over the sheriffs and probation departments, it's no secret that the board lacks many powers that will result in true accountability. It is now time to look to the future of independent, community-driven law enforcement oversight in San Diego County and expanding your roles and responsibilities as recommended by the SDJ report, and that's a fundamental part of that. In particular, I'd like to see the SDJ recommendations related to jurisdictional scope and powers move forward by the board, detailing duties and actions that CLERB must take when investigating complaints, allowing board members and staff to file complaints as well, strengthening the board's ability to investigate violations of local ordinances required, requiring unannounced detention facility visits and implementing the and publishing periodic practice at pattern and procedure audits. and implementing the and publishing periodic practice at pattern and procedure audits. Each of these proposed changes will make a real difference in your ability to hold the sheriff and probation departments accountable. The result will be, as we all want, a community law enforcement review board that better serves the people of San Diego County going forward. I'd also like to say that I am in total agreement with the report in terms of diversifying the clerk board. And I am glad it's as diversified as it is when we first started coming two and a half years ago. There were, was not a lot of diversity on the board. Um, I appreciate, uh, Paul Parker's, um, leadership on this and the rest of the board members, but I would also like to see youth on this board. And I know that's a lot and it will take a lot of work on the board's part to be able to integrate um, young people and people from the community who may not be as educated, may not have the same level of education, but have the passion and know their communities. So I'd also like to put in a plug for that and I thank you for all the work you do.
Thank you. Next, we'll go to some online requests to speak.
Mrs. Talbert, are you there?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Your time starts now.
Okay, thank you. My name is Marissa Talbert. I am one of the co-chairs along with Andrea St. Julian of San Diegans for Justice. And I really just want to echo some of the things that she said. Um, San Diegans for Justice, we are advocating for trust, accountability and transparency on behalf of the community. Um, some of the things that I just want to highlight again, the need for independent counsel. That counsel, um, being responsible for both law enforcement, the sheriff's department and clerk is a conflict of interest, no matter how you slice it. It is a perceived conflict. It is a potential and an actual conflict of interest. And clerk needs its own independent counsel. We also, I also want to highlight the need for discretionary versus mandatory duties for clerk. Um, we all are still very much, the community is still very much, um, it is, it is top of mind still for us, the twenty-two, um, cases that were dismissed under clerk a few years ago. And that is partly the, uh, partly the reason for that is because of the lack of discretionary versus mandatory duties, which also brings me to the timelines that Andrea pointed out. There is a need for the timelines. We know that we are up against a one-year statutory timeline for imposed discipline um, in matters that are serious matters. And those timelines of when the city, when a department needs to respond, it needs to be imposed because, um, a lack of those timelines just gives, um, whichever department, um, the, the, the room to, to just, um, delay process, delay oversight, delay review, delay investigation. And then we're back to square one where we're dismissing cases, dismissing cases where people have died, dismissing cases where there, there has been serious bodily injury and we can do nothing about it. And so those timelines need to be imposed in the ordinance. Um, the next thing that I want to just highlight is the need to be able to investigate or review matters without a complaint. If we are going to say that clerk needs to, um, or has the function, has auditory functions and has the function to, um, investigate, uh, patterns and practices, then they will be looking at complaints and they will be looking at actions that happen in real time. And they need to be able to dig further and dig deeper without having an actual complaint filed.
I'm sorry, your time has expired. Next up is Dr. Fishman. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Perfect. Your time starts now.
Uh, thank you, Darwin Fishman. He, him, his, Racial Justice Coalition, San Diego. Thank you. Um, you had a really thorough, very powerful presentation from Andrea, San Diego's for Justice. We hold hardly agree with it. The thrust of it is based on the community, what's happened to us. And also clearly saying, uh, putting out there about what needs to be done to strengthen clerk and improve it. I'm also hoping that since San Diego's for Justice did the report and sixty-eight of those recommendations have already been accepted that these will not be controversial changes and that all of you have the same vision for continuing to strengthen and improve clerk, especially given the background of last year having a record twenty in custody deaths. It's, it's of course very safe to say that there's more that clerk should and could do. And that if we have a robust clerk and that's civilian oversight of law enforcement, then you can actually have a role and we won't have record twenty in custody deaths. These recommendations, what's listed very carefully and meticulously by standings for justice are all things that are needed. It would improve the quality of your work and it's also something that would gain the trust of the community. Uh, I would just want to add real quickly, um, is having the experience on the community review board, police practices for the city of San Diego. We actually, when I was first on there in our meetings, and I've mentioned this before, but I can't highlight this point enough. The city attorney sat in a meeting. Not only did the city attorney sit in our meetings and give us legal advice, but they did not disclose, even when there was lawsuits against the city, that they were defending the city. So we found that sustain a complaint against an officer, if the city was being sued, it wouldn't make any sense to get advice from the city attorney that's defending the city. And that's, I say that by way of background because the independent counsel is a really key point. A lot of these issues refer back to the independence of clerk and being able to make independent decisions. Trying to not talk about the influences that other entities have, like city attorney and legal counsel is not wise. You have to be open about that and how it influences the investigation, just like from law enforcement in their role in our ability to do investigations too. The other thing too, which I want to highlight from the community standpoint, I hope again, these are not controversial. The policies and procedures, things like the requirement that complaints are signed, almost a complaint be required to sign under perjury, uh, under penalty or perjury, a perjury. These are really important to build up that community trust and to be able to get things like people to file complaints and believe that the complaints that they file will be taken seriously and that clerk really is citizen oversight of law enforcement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Tremlett. Are you there?
I'm here. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Your time starts.
Yeah, go ahead. Um, my name is Andy Tremlett. Um, I'm with Activate La Mesa. And I just want to say, uh, to San Diegan for Justice, thank you so much for doing all this work. It's an incredible service to the community, all the time and effort and expertise you clearly put into this, uh, list of recommendations. We sincerely appreciate it. Um, a few points, I, on the, on the independence, it's what, what a lot of, what's so important about independence is not that just you act independent, but that you appear independent because acting independent, it only gets you so far if people don't see you as independent. So you really need to take extra steps to make sure that you appear independent. And I think these recommendations will help with that a great deal. I think it's also very important to investigate pattern and practices, um, without a complaint. Waiting until something goes terribly wrong is, is really not a great strategy for making our community better and safer. So let's take a proactive approach and really look at what's going on and what the practices are and make a change now before things get even worse. Um, on the complaint forum, I actually served a couple of years ago on the task force that set up the La Mesa Police Oversight Board. And I spent a little bit of time doing some early work on the complaint forum and the questions that we were always asking is, do we really need this on the form? Because every question you put on the form, even questions that aren't controversial or scary, the more questions you have, the more barriers you're putting up and the less chance you have that someone's going to complete that form. So the form is as streamlined as possible and any questions that have the slightest hint of, uh, inducing fear should be absolutely removed. Then finally transparency, um, anything that isn't published is going to lead the community to conclude they're hiding something. Whether it's true or not, that's what's going to happen. If, if something is not published, people are going to assume that it is, people are hiding something there. So it's so important that you publish everything that you possibly can into the law. Thank you so much to everyone who's worked on this. I sincerely appreciate it.
Thank you. Next is Mrs. Crawford. Are you there, Mrs. Crawford?
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Your time starts now.
Okay, well, I just want to reiterate what everyone else has said, transparency, teeth and independence. There's bad policies and procedures by management in the sheriff's department and only you can change that. Even if there's not something that has to go to court, it's still something that needs to be held up as the wrong way to proceed. Uh, they, they go, they don't go to court. They pay out millions of dollars because they don't want to go to trial. And you're the only, the only thing the public has to find out anything that's going on. It would be easier for me to ask my son what his last day was like than to find out anything from the sheriff's department. And this shouldn't be the case. Uh, I appreciate your time and I really stand behind these, uh, these procedures that have been proposed. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Mrs. Remus.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, your time starts now.
Thank you very much and good evening, clerk members. My name is Karen Remus and my pronouns are she, her and hers. I'm a resident of zip code nine, two, one, three, one, and an attorney who has been licensed for over thirty years. Clerk and Mr. Parker, thank you for the changes you were proposing to expand clerk's authority this evening. I'm especially grateful to see the proposed expansion of clerk's jurisdiction to investigate additional county staff, expanded ability to directly access the sheriff's department and probation department's reporting systems, and increased authority to conduct pattern and practice investigations. I would also like to voice enthusiastic support for the amendments being proposed by San Diegans for Justice this evening, especially the need for clerk to have independent legal counsel, the articulation of mandatory duties assigned to clerk and the increased transparency measures. San Diegans for Justice is a crucially important community partner and the integration of their thoughtful input is a vital part of this process. Lastly, thank you for keeping the victims and their families at the center of your attention as you continue this work. I really appreciate the opportunity to address you this evening.
Thank you. Next is A.C. Mills. Are you there?
Now, can you hear me? Now, mute me. Uh, anyway, all I'm saying is that I appreciate what the curb has done and what they're attempting to do. You gotta start all over again.
Yeah, they just started. Can you?
Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, I see. But anyway, I appreciate all you've done and all the way you responded and all, everything that everybody has said today, Youssef Miller and Darwin and all the speakers. I feel the same way about the transparency and about holding officers accountable, uh, to what they're doing and all the recommendations that you, curb has done and you continue to do. And I, 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 I'm just so pleased. It's been two years and I appreciate you all. And, uh, just keep, keep, keep the, the fight, uh, to keep trying to find the answers and responding. And, and I'm totally, I'm, I'm really satisfied and thank you all.
Thank you. Next up is Anthony Avalos. Are you there?
I am here. Can you hear me?
Yes, your time starts now.
So first I want to say thank you so much, um, to clerk, um, as well as the speakers who've come before me. I want to say thank you, uh, to all the family members who have lost loved ones, uh, while in custody. I know that, um, your trauma is real. I know that it is not easy, uh, to do this work based in, in the pain and the horror that you've experienced. And I want to commend you for continuing to show up, to continue to help guide policy. I also want to take this time to thank San Diegans for Justice. San Diegans for Justice, um, has put together some proposed amendments to the clerk ordinance and rules that I think are absolutely mandatory and being able to accomplish the goals, uh, set forth. Uh, just real quick, my name again is Anthony Avalos. I'm a fourth generation San Diegan, uh, both black and Mexican. And I am directly impacted, justice impacted, um, specifically, uh, through the harm caused by the war on drugs. So once again, I applaud your efforts to this point. I think that with the proposed amendments, uh, from San Diego for Justice, we really have a chance to create a brand new relationship between law enforcement and the surrounding community through the, uh, the increase of transparency and accountability. Uh, with those two items, we can actually build a, um, public safety profile in San Diego that doesn't scream racism. I want to thank you again for your time, for your efforts, and I wish you all good luck.
Thank you. Next is David Settles. Are you there?
Yes, hello, can you hear me?
Yes, your time starts now.
Yes. Hi, um, my name is David Settles. My brother Matthew Settles, uh, passed away in custody just this past, um, August. So I, I would just like to voice my support, um, for the proposed recommendations that were presented tonight. Um, I know what, what I want, what my family want is really, you know, transparency and, and the facts. Right now we have no information on, on what happened to my brother. So the transparency as well as the strengthening of the clerk and its independence to help us and give us confidence that we are gonna, you know, get the information that, that we are looking for. Um, it's why I, I do support the recommendations. So that's all I'd like to say and thank you for everything we do.
Thank you. Paul, that concludes our online requests to speaks.
Thank you, ma'am. We have one request to be read into the record and I'd like to do that now. My name is Deidre McLeod and I'm a constituent of Board Supervisor Joel Anderson, District Two. My pronouns are she and her. I'm writing in support of the proposed provisions to the clerk rules and regulations being discussed at the March twenty-eighth, two thousand and twenty-three special meeting. While I welcome the many changes before you designed to expand clerk vital investigatory authority, I am particularly in favor of, one, expanding the board's proposed responsibilities to include auditing, monitoring and analyzing sheriffs and probation department policies and practices. And two, allowing clerk to have direct access to sheriffs and probation department reporting systems. Data access and analysis and law enforcement oversight is becoming more and more important. Recent legislation like SB sixteen and SB fourteen, twenty-one has opened up law enforcement personnel disciplinary records statewide. San Diego's for Justice twenty twenty clerk assessment pointed out the thirty-year-plus trove of information related to complaints and incidents at your fingertips right now. Combining sources like these with additional information gained by auditing and monitoring both departments' reporting systems will allow, will allow clerk to be not just reactive to complaints that arise, but proactive in identifying and hopefully preventing problems before they happen. The San Diego community has long been asking for solutions to persist in bias, discrimination, neglect, excessive use of force and deaths in custody or in the field. I urge you to press forward with both of these additions to the clerk rules and regulations as vital to your work of holding the sheriff's department and the probation department accountable to the people they serve on these issues and more. Chair Delaney?
Thank you very much. There's no more public comments. We'll go to the board. Questions?
We have one more online request to speak.
Oh, sure. Okay.
Hi, Lynn Owens, are you there?
Yes, thank you. I, good evening. Can I, are you, can you hear me?
Yes, ma'am, your time starts now.
Okay, this, my name is Lynn Owens. I'm a longtime resident of zip code nine two one three one. I just want to add one more voice supporting the proposed revisions to the Club rules and regulations. The San Diegans for Justice recommendations identify vital areas where Club's oversight needs shoring up. And now, while you've got community groups like STJ supporting you, now is the time to strengthen Club for the future. The people of San Diego have proven that we support independent, community-driven oversight of our local law enforcement agencies. We are behind you. I hope all these speakers tonight make that clear to you. Ask for everything you need, everything the San Diego community needs to fulfill your mission of increasing public confidence in and accountability of county law enforcement. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we have Jeremy. Jeremy, are you there?
Yes, I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes, your time starts now.
Thank you. I just wanted to say thank you to all of the speakers who came before me and to Club, thank you for what you've done so far. I, I'm new to, this is my first time listening in. However, what I've heard from San Diego, San Diego's for Justice follows right in line with what I believe should be happening with law enforcement across the country, especially here in San Diego. As I do hear our community come up in some national conversations. I do hope, Club, that you all take these recommendations and amendments seriously and look to install them because a, as a Michigan native, I know what it's like to have the police and the sheriff's departments look down and be held unaccountable to anyone except for themselves. To have the investigators investigating themselves never works out and it leads to community mistrust. I do hope that you guys take these, consider, take these amendments into consideration and really move to push and get them installed so that Club is working more efficiently as we move into the future. That is all and I thank you all for your time.
Thank you. We have one more. Crystal Irving. Crystal, are you there?
Hi, I'm here. Is this the appropriate time? I'm looking to speak on item two B. Is this the best time?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, awesome. So good evening, everyone. My name is Crystal Irving and I'm president of SEIU Local two two one, the labor union that represents medical and support staff employees in the San Diego County detention facilities. I came before you in October of twenty twenty-one when the issues of expanding Club's purview over medical staff was first brought forward and came to you again at last month's meeting. Once again, I want to highlight that SEIU has a longstanding public record of advocacy for improving workplace safety and health for our health services professionals, the humane treatment of detainees, and an improved healthcare delivery system in our county jails. And once again, I will reiterate that we agree with this board that the current health and safety conditions for our workforce and detainees are insufficient and need much-needed change. No family should have to mourn the loss of a family member while in custody. We have repeatedly asked Mr. Parker and this board to engage with our members to understand their challenges before moving forward with this important decision. I left last meeting feeling hopeful that you all would engage with our members, but I'm showing up today a little disappointed that you've ignored our requests and seem to be ready to move forward today. In doing so, you'll send a clear message to our members that their voice is not needed or welcomed in this process and in a decision that will impact them greatly. I also want to speak to the meet and confer process which came up last time. This is the legal right that is won by unions to discuss any changes in working conditions. And I want to state that this is a ceiling, but it's not the floor. I don't want there to be any confusion. There is no legal obstacle to meeting with and listening to the county employees who are impacted by your decision. And that responsibility is with each and every member of this board and with Mr. Parker. It's not too late for us to work together to achieve our common goal. And I believe many of the solutions can be found within our members because they have a unique insight to the issues and challenges faced in the jail. I am again resubmitting the letter which features five recommendations that should be included in investigations. I want to thank you for your time and consideration. Our members are counting on you to ensure that their voices, their challenges and their experiences are heard prior to a formal decision of this board. And also as a footnote, I want to acknowledge and thank San Diegans for Justice for their work to provide quality amendments to the Club ordinance and Club ordinance and rules. And I believe with those findings and some input from our members, we really will land at the best place to serve our communities. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mr.? Did you have somebody online still?
Yes, we have two more folks.
Okay, and then Mr. Packard wanted to speak again on two B and we can do that as well.
Thank you. Next is Mary Best. Are you there, Mary?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can, ma'am. Your time starts now.
Okay, thank you so much. I'll be very brief, but I just really want to thank Club for all the work that you've done leading up to this in, in collaboration with the San Diegans for Justice, all the recommendations they've made, all the recommendations you've made. And I, I guess the main thing is from here, it does go back to law enforcement. And I would just hope that as this moves forward, that you have the full support, which I think you're hearing here today, you have the full support of the community, the families, the, the organizations. But I hope you also, also have the full support of the board of supervisors. Because I think that this will require all the support of folks that have the ability to make sure that law enforcement is accountable and transparent. And that the, the deaths that we've had in the past year and, and over the last several years and all of the lawsuits and all of the, you know, money that's gone out to these families for unnecessary deaths that in fact, you know, these families will be served. And that the end result of this is that there will be fewer deaths in custody and people will feel more confidence, much more confidence and trust, community and trust in, in our law enforcement system and that there will, maybe this will also contribute to systemic changes in the way law enforcement is, is operating in San Diego County. So thank you again so much, San Diegans for Justice and to Club. We, we all really appreciate the work that you're doing. Okay, thanks so much.
Thank you. We have Siani Valencia. Are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Your time starts now.
Good evening, members of the board and to everyone who brought this, this amendment forward. They're all sound like great things and I appreciate everybody bringing it forward. I cannot speak on part of law enforcement. I am a nurse. I have a license behind my name, not a badge. On, I am speaking today to pee back off of what Crystal Irving, our representative for SEIU, our president, what she says are unique challenges in the jails. So most of our staff are a little confused as to far as why to be with pick on the medical staff. Um, it just, you, we just view it as, we view this move as a little bit of overreach. I would like to provide some context in my, my limited amount of time. I work at George Bailey and at any given moment, there is only maybe thirteen to fifteen nurses to serve a population of approximately two thousand inmates. And we respond to everything from riots to overdoses to intoxication. Everything that you can think of that happens in the streets of San Diego, it's much more concentrated in the jails. And our staff is, we're really, we're really under a lot of pressure. We're under a lot of scrutiny. And to bring this proposal to include medical staff where we're just, the medical staff is just coming out of a pandemic and we literally just had to fight to keep our jobs and to remain government employees. Um, that stems from integrity, honesty and accountability. Nurses is the most trusted profession voted three or four times in a row to include us in what seems to be more of a law enforcement issue is outrageous. And considering the, what's happening out there now, the profession is currently under an attack, especially with the case of, um, forgot her name, but there was a nurse who was convicted of negligent homicide. It's gonna drive nurses away from the profession and it's, well, gonna drive nurses away from correctional in particular, if you move this forward and include medical staff in two B. I highly encourage you to reconsider and work with SEIU on this issue to make the appropriate changes. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Tom Packard?
Let me just make it clear that public is welcome to speak on two B as well. Mr. Packard, come on up.
Yeah, Tom Packard, again, I'm speaking this time from my perspective. I'm a professor emeritus in social work at SDSU. And I've done a lot of consulting and research with county and city executives. So I want to talk about implementation in terms of performance improvement and changed leadership. I believe that all the proposed revisions to the rules and regulations are relevant, important, sensible and feasible. Particularly impactful should be the recommendations regarding systemic change, expanding your role regarding civilian employees and contract service providers, critical incident review board reports, findings and summaries. All of these revisions are fully aligned with the department's mission, organizational vision and core values. If the sheriff and her executive team have a full commitment to those statements and have basic change leadership skills, and if most staff share those commitments, implementation will be challenging, but over time, very achievable. Sheriff leadership and staff should see these recommendations not as problems, workload increases or threats to their authority, but as opportunities to improve department functioning, which will actually make their jobs easier and more satisfying as conditions in the jails improve. I hope I'm not naive in saying that because I've seen in other public sector bureaucracies, these change can happen. For any recommendations that the sheriff declines to implement, please ask them to provide detailed rationales regarding the barriers to implementation so that your staff can continue to work with their staff to eliminate those barriers and ensure implementation. And let me add, based on the comments from CSIU, and I've done work with several unions in terms of these kinds of change processes. And I would add that you really should encourage the sheriff to get staff at all levels, the sworn staff, the civilian staff and the contract providers, get them involved in implementation so that the realities of what you recommend, recommend are going to be seen as workable from their point of view. And I, I think getting them involved in the process will build commitment and it'll enable the final product to be a lot more effective. Thanks for your time and for your leadership on, on this process.
So to be clear, are there any other requests? I, I know we have some in, in-house here and I would, I'm gonna call all four of you back up, right? Is that what we want? Miss, okay, all of you. Anybody else?
We have no more online.
All right, so Ms. Erna?
Ah, yes, thank you once again for letting me speak. I would like to invite the board and CSIU to come out to the preliminary hearing. I know it's been delayed already for a year. It's like about the fourth one, I believe, to the preliminary hearing to see the video. I want CSIU to see why we, it's very important for the Club to be involved even with the medical profession because it was a, a nurse and deputies, but it was a nurse that was also in that cell with my daughter. They saw her dying and they still, with her profession, her, they walked away and left her there to die. You would think even a, the average person would at least feel uncomfortable and call nine one one and ask for help. Um, and it's, it's very important for the public to see this video, this evidence because not everything is really being portrayed out into the media. So please do get involved and let the nurses and the deputies be held accountable for the loss of our loved ones. Thank you.
Thank you. Jennifer Schmidt?
Their nurse's name is Danielle Pesquol, who's on trial or gonna go on trial for manslaughter and she deserves every bit of it. The nurses are telling the deputies what to do with these inmates. So why would they not be under your guys' supervision? They're the ones telling the deputies, oh, they're okay, walk away. And if they're doing their job, what's the problem watching them? If they're not neglecting people or abusing people, what's the problem watching them? It's weeding out the bad ones. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you. Sabrina Weddle?
Hello, Sabrina Weddle again, Saxon Rodriguez's sister. The medical staff definitely needs to be held accountable for the job that they took on. They signed up for a job and they knew what that role was when they took on these inmates. If they are understaffed, they need to let that be known instead of allowing people to die under their care. I went through the San Diego Sheriff's report that I have. There's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine nurses that were interviewed. I don't know who. I haven't read all the report because as you can imagine, reading about your dead brother is really hard. But nine nurses that were interviewed in that report, Melissa Burns, Reggie Barretto, Carol, Carrie Cavelo, Rhea in, in Carnesia, Caitlin Hendricks, Marilyn Ebanzi, Embanzin, then, sorry, these names are hard. Kelly Payne, Levy Santos and Shantel Williams. And if any of those people are tuned in that were responsible for my brother during his death, you guys are definitely, need to be held responsible along with the sheriff's Brian Poway, Andrew Randovich, Maxwell Rimple, Andre Wanzar, Reggie, but Reggie is a, a nurse, but all of those people need to be held accountable. All of those people got to clock in the next day after my brother died and allowed several other people to die, not several, hundreds. I don't even know how many people have died since twenty twenty-one. At least there's probably two hundred people that have died since our family members. And to sit here and hear a nurse say that they shouldn't be held accountable for a job they took on, that's bullshit. Everybody needs to be held accountable. My mom is a preschool teacher and I'll continue to say it. And if an infant or anybody died under her care, she'd be held accountable. We just had a Tennessee shooting. Who's gonna be held accountable for that? Everybody gets to walk away from this situation, still paid while I have to grieve. My son is at home at dance class and I'm here with you guys. Hungry. And for a nurse to sit here and say she shouldn't be held accountable, again, bullshit. You took on a role and that's to be responsible for these humans. If these deputies aren't allowing you to do your job, you better stand up. The two people that are being held on, about to be in trial, they better speak up. Those deputies that told them to walk away, they allowed it. They allowed, a human walked away from another human dying, a pregnant human at that. So again, June twenty-sixth, for the nurses that are tuned in, that work at George Bailey, San Diego Downtown, Vista, Los Colinas, June twenty-sixth, show up. And I pray that you never have to feel the pain that we feel.
Thank you. Are there any other requests? Are there any other requests to speak in person for item two B? Mr. Gall?
We have three online requests to speaks. The first one is Mrs. Talbert. Are you there?
I am here.
Yes, your time starts now.
Okay, I do want to stand with community members and respond to the nurse who asked why they need to be held under Club's jurisdiction. under clerk's jurisdiction. I am an attorney. I also have a license. And again, if I do something wrong under my license, somebody relies on my professional expertise to their detriment, I get held accountable. Every license, we are professionals. We should be held accountable. If a nursing, if the nursing um practice is one of the most um trusted jobs, you should have no problem being over overseen and held accountable. As one of the other community members mentioned, we are weeding out the ones who are not doing their job. There is a such thing as medical malpractice and the state audit report that came out last year um reflected a lot of medical malpractice in addition to um negligence that is happening both by um deputies and by medical staff and nurses. So yes, the nurses do need to be held accountable. It is incensing to hear um that this this these amendments are picking on a professional licensed individual who chose a certain profession. Yes, you should be held accountable and I wanna stand with community members on that.
Thank you. Next is Michael Serna. Mike, are you there?
Yes, I am. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir. Your time starts now.
Okay. All evening I've been listening to everything everybody's been saying and I really do appreciate the uh the individual, the uh from San Diego Justice uh the uh the report and the suggestions and everything are spot on. Me and my wife have always talked about this. My name is Michael Serna. I'm the father of Lisa Serna, who died in custody under the supervision of San Diego County sheriffs and the medical staff who the union represents. She died under their care. Now, I wanna thank this uh this group who came and put these suggestions forth. They did an excellent job. Also, I wanna thank the clerk for all the work that they've been doing. But last week it was no, it was it was so evident how the two entities, San Diego sheriffs and clerk can sometimes seem as one group. When the sheriff got done speaking over and over, the clerk members, they got on and they talked, they 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 talked about how much they appreciate all the work and everything. I can probably put together a a very flowery presentation about all the things I would love to do and and hope to do in the future. And time and time again, I heard the clerk uh talk about the good relationships that they had with that very same sheriff. How they had go back way back and all of this. Now, how do you think we feel as the community when we're looking at you and listening to you, how you guys are so buddy buddy? The sheriff said she cringed when she heard accusations of her sheriffs, you know, uh acting immoral. And so did the members of the clerk said they use that same term. I that they cringed when they heard the accusations that people in the community were were hurly towards the sheriff. Well, you know what? Every time I hear about somebody else dying in the custody of sheriffs, I cringe. When I heard about how the clerk and the sheriffs are both represented by the same uh attorneys, I cringed. When I heard this nurse get on right now and talk about the sterling individuals who are nurses in our county jails, I cringed. When I heard that the union representative get on and 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 say how they should not be held accountable accountable or there should not be uh transparency when it comes to them, I cringed. I do thank the clerk and I do thank everybody that spoke tonight. And I wasn't gonna speak because I didn't think, you know, I was just gonna be echoing. But when these people get on and they begin to talk about things that they don't know, when they wanna dis, you know, the uh uh these are our experiences. How can you say they're not right and they're not true? This is what we.
Thank you. Your time is up. Uh, we have a request to speak on item two B. Sienna Valencia, are you there?
Yes, I'm here.
Your time starts now, Sianni.
Thank you. First, let me address the the family members who have lost someone. I yeah, my condolences. I am very sorry for your loss. And to the attorney who is incensed that I would even say that we should not be held accountable. No, I did not say that. Please do not say that. I did never said that. What I am saying is just if you can speak about your experiences, I can also speak about mine. And I cannot speak about Los Colinas or Vista. I don't work at those jails. I work at George Bailey. And I can tell you, for the fifteen nurses, for the approximately two thousand inmates, we do our very best to save everyone that we can with the resources that we've been given and the staffing ratios that we have. And to address the person who said that we should tell the sheriff's department that we need more staffing. Lady, we've been telling the sheriff's department that for over twenty years, twenty years. We came out of the pandemic on mandatory overtime, working six days a week, sixteen hour shifts. And we said, yes, we'll do it because we know we were needed. We were even losing staff prior to the pandemic. And we tried to get the sheriff's department to give us the appropriate staffing, which I will let the attorney know there is no ratio. There is no definitive ratio for a nurse to to nurse to patient in a correctional setting. That is hindering us. But please don't take your anger out on the medical staff when you clearly do not fully understand the surmounting mountain of obstacles that we have to go through just to do our jobs, but we still show up. I feel your anger and no, no one should have to suffer the way your family members did. But if you do this without working with S C I U to address our concerns, this is a step back to creating a non punitive culture of openness and transparency that everybody wants. When you criminalize and scapegoat the medical staff when it is a systemic issue. I think we can all agree on that. So please don't take your anger out on the medical staff. This is not me pinning sheriffs against community, against medical. We want help. But you gotta work with S C I U to do it. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes comments.
Okay, thank you. Um, I'd like to go back to Ms. St. Julian. Um, first of all, I wanna thank you for that very thoughtful, in-depth um presentation. I know that took a long time to put together. Um, it's very thought provoking and what we don't cover tonight, we certainly will cover at a different future meeting. Um, with that, um, we're going to focus tonight on the proposed revisions that were presented by Mister Parker. But before we do that, I want to give the clerk an opportunity to to ask you questions and get clarification on anything that they might be be concerned about. Does anyone have any questions?
Alan, I I do have a question.
Okay.
Um, so when you're referencing, um, I guess in your, I have your your letter that you sent to us and thank you for that. Um, when you send, when so when you went through all of this, I just wanna make sure I understand which sections are applied to the ordinance as opposed to the R and R changes, rule and regulations changes.
You know, one has to follow the other.
Yeah.
The ordinance is the actual official legislation and then the rules follow them. So they apply to both. Okay? These should be incorporated in the ordinance and the rules should then reflect what's been placed in the ordinance.
Okay. And I guess this might be for staff to to change the ordinance, that has to go to the county board of supervisors. Is that correct? Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Again, I wanna thank you very much for that. Um, I'm sure we'll be referring referring to it and and we appreciate you taking the time to do that. Thank you.
Thank you so much and I'm always available to be a resource if the board would like me to attend to address anything. I am more than happy to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, so moving on now, um, Mister Hayes, Mister and Ms. Kink. Um, I I asked you to meet with Mister Parker to discuss the best way to facilitate the meeting. Um, and you came up with the ideas to prioritize the proposed revisions. Um, Mister Hayes, could you give us a little bit more information about that and Ms. Kink as well?
I'm happy to start if you'd like. Okay, um, so we met and we went through um kind of just how we we wanted to pursue these these proposed changes to the rules and regulations. And what we what we talked about was, you know, these are, a lot of these have a lot of meat to them. Some of them don't. Some of them are are things that that, you know, require us probably to delve in more detail and work with Mister Parker further to to work through. Um, and so what we kinda came to the agreement of after after some discussion was let's let's have the board decide what our top priority is, top priority or priorities are from the nineteen that we have or more than that, let's say twenty one uh that are before us this evening. And just say, you know what, we wanna prioritize maybe this one at this time. And then we're gonna bring these others back after we get X, Y and Z. Or perhaps we wanna do these three and we bring the others back. Or perhaps we wanna move forward with five. And we say these others, we need more detail. So that's kinda what we discussed in the meeting and I'll turn it over to Ms. Kink just in case I missed anything from the meeting.
I have nothing to add. You did an excellent job, Mister Hayes. Thank you.
Well, thank you both. I appreciate it. Um, so what I've done is I've asked Mister Parker to categorize the revisions based on the subject matter. Um, and if at this point, I'm gonna turn it over to you, Mister Parker. And hopefully this will um give us bundles, if you will, that we can that we can prioritize. Mister Parker?
Thank you, Chair Delaney. To be clear, uh, what I'd like to do first and foremost is to to make it very clear. First of all, thank you to everybody who's here, all the family members who are here, all the community members who are here. Um, Ms. St. Julian and San Diego for Justice, thank you. As you all know, back on February, in February of twenty twenty two, we were there, we were audited along with the sheriff's department. And there were recommendations that were made uh for us to improve our practices and some of those are reflected here and we'll get into those. On March eighth of last year, we talked about and we presented to San Diego for Justice complete comprehensive report. On August ninth of last year, this board gave me permission to move forward with sixty eight of the seventy that that they were looking at at the time. I did not obviously move forward with sixty eight of the seventy, uh but I I put together what I felt, what I believed to be the high priority ones at that time, which Ms. St. Julian and I have talked about subsequent subsequently. So that's where we are today. We've talked about them over the last couple of meetings. And now tonight, I'm gonna take the twenty one, but I'm also gonna talk a little bit about what what Ms. St. Julian presented as well. There there are really four major categories, maybe five at this point. The first one uh is to codify our current practices. Many of the twenty one that I put forward in the letter basically are just saying, this is what we already do. So let's make it happen, like make it official, right? Those would be our our vision statement. Those would be in response to the audit. The audit said for us, the recommendation was to make sure that we document that we have jurisdiction over natural deaths. That was a problem here before that we didn't investigate deaths that were natural. We also prioritized the the death investigations. They're a top priority for clerk. So we wanna we wanna codify that. We wanna talk about basically the written and oral responses that we currently get from the sheriff's department, probation department employees during the course of our investigation. We just wanna codify that. Yes, we look at those and we put those in our investigative report. We wanna codify that. We wanna codify that notice notify clerk of in custody deaths. The sheriffs and probation departments do that right now. But we but that's not part of our rules and regulations that they do that. And specified incidents. When we talk about specified incidents, we're talking about uses of force resulting in great bodily injury and he discharged a firearm and a use of force at a First Amendment or protest event that we can look at without a signed complaint. We're already doing all of these things, but they're nowhere to be documented. So tho- that's one, codify current practices and those are the items that we just that are part of the twenty one. The next, and I, you know, I I acknowledge that the folks are are very uh have very strong feelings about the jurisdiction over medical care providers. I might as well throw it out there. Uh, the reason that that I've moved forward with this and that it's been a priority of this board and this executive officer and everybody really, I think at this dais is because no matter what, we are only getting half of the story for any death that occurs in custody. We only have the jurisdiction to look at the actions of the sworn members. We have zero jurisdiction to look at the actions of medical care providers. That is our second grouping here and I'm I'm not putting them in any order of importance. I'm just, this is what we what we have. So for the medical care provider jurisdiction expansion would be to basically, you know, have jurisdiction over anybody providing medical care in those facilities. To change uh subject officer, it's a term that we use, to subject of investigation, right? Because it they're not officers if we have jurisdiction over these folks. To define what misconduct is on the part of medical service providers. Talk a little bit about a deviation of standard of care and or omission, whatever. That's part of the recommendations. To to afford those persons the same rights that we already afford, that are already afforded to sworn members of the departments, it's the procedural officer's bill of rights. But these folks wouldn't be covered by that. We contend that if 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 we move forward and somehow we get this jurisdiction over these folks, that we would provide that to them. That's fair. It's the right thing to do. And then also that that we would be notified of any death that occurs in connection to the actions or omissions or whatnot of a medical care provider. We also talk a little bit about contractors because many, some some medical care providers are contractors. We we talk about that. So that's under this category as well. So that's the medical care provider category. The next category out of these twenty one, in addition to some of the ones that were mentioned outside of the twenty one, pattern and practice, pattern and practice investigations, auditing, monitoring. Four of those recommendations, four that are in the letter out of the twenty one put forth, many brought forward by San Diego for Justice, specifically talk about pattern and practice. We believe that that should be categorized, allow for direct access of syst- of systems, law enforcement systems, to conduct those pattern and practice and audit, monitoring activities. Define audit and monitoring. And then also to add the results of whatever we do, pattern and practice, audit, monitor, whatever, to our annual report. Makes sense. So that's the third category category. Four, at this point, clerk does not have uh the jurisdiction to look at any deaths of probationers that happen outside of the juvenile detention facilities. We don't look at anybody who's on probation who dies. We have no jurisdiction to do that, to do that. We think we do. But we wanna talk a little bit more about it and present that. To see if there are some maybe issues that can prevent deaths of folks on probation that are occurring outside, but still under the care, not under the care of, but under the guidance of or under the the supervision of a probation officer. We'd like to, that's that's a category in and of itself. Another category out of the twenty one is the prohibition. We cannot look at anything that comes to us that is filed over a year ago. Like like that's something that happened over a year ago, absent certain type of exemptions, tolling exemptions, whether the person was incarcerated or they had a documented physical or mental incapacity, which is up to them to prove, right? But we we contend that if there's something serious, serious, we should be able to look at that. The sheriff's department would and probation department would. We contend the same. And so that would be um eliminate the one year prohibition and then also make sure that we don't summarily dismiss cases, right? And then there's another category that basically just says it's the other things we had in the twenty one, right? Um, that the sheriff's department or probation department would would respond to our policy recommendations within a certain number of days. We put sixty days, whatever is decided. And then there are just a bunch of other miscellaneous kinda housekeeping items. And then finally, every single thing that was just presented to us, that's another category that that Ms. St. Julian just presented to us on behalf of San Diego for Justice. That is the categorization. And prior to giving this back to you, Chair Delaney, um, I do have a Vice Chair Pintar could not be here. Uh, however, she has, she wants something read into the record before um the board members deliberate next steps. So if I may, I am unable to uh to attend the three twenty eight special meeting due to travel and I'd like my written comments read into the record. My top priorities for reforms are, number one, expansive clerk jurisdiction to include oversight over medical and mental health staff at all San Diego sheriff and probation detention facilities in order to prevent deaths and great bodily injuries. Number two, expansion of clerk's jurisdiction to include analysis of sheriff's department and probation department patterns and practices in order to prevent deaths, injuries and excessive uses of force. Number three, eliminating the prohibition to investigate actions received over one year, particularly for cases involving death and serious injury or harm to the public or incarcerated persons. And number four, expansion of clerk jurisdiction. And number four, expansion of clerk jurisdiction to investigate probation or deaths. As it relates to expansive jurisdiction over unsworn detention facility staff, I prioritize oversight over staff with direct responsibility for the care and supervision of folks in custody. With regard to analysis of patterns and practices, areas to examine should include how understaffing and overtime contribute to officer and staff inability to provide adequate care, service, and professional judgment. Regarding the one-year limit, clerks should consider limiting investigations of cases older than one year to those involving deaths and serious injury or harm in order to manage investigator workload so that they can more fully focus on what matters most. Finally, I support any change to codify current practice. Thank you for including my comments in tonight's meeting. Chair Delaney.
Okay, so I'd like you to open it up to clerk. Let's talk about our priorities here. Or how we want to prioritize, I should say. Um, who would like to start? Okay. Oh, I'm, you okay?
Yeah, I'm good. So the, um, I'm referring to the letter.
I'm referring to the letter that Mr. Parker sent to us with the justification for the changes. And as far as I'm concerned, um, and we, we're hearing from the community as well, number eight and number 17 really are my top priority.
And to be clear, number eight, if I may, number eight and number 17 pertain to the one-year prohibition. The one-year, the deadline that, that we are not permitted to look at anything older than a year, correct? Okay.
Yeah, it might be easier when we, when we talk to, to put it in the category so that we know, for example, the codifier or the medical or pattern and practice, that type of thing. Um, so
I'm done talking now, though.
Okay. Okay. All right, who else? Okay, I'll, I'll jump in. First of all, I think we should codify, definitely. Think that's kind of a no-brainer there. We're doing it. Let's, let's codify it. Second, medical. I think that's very important. As, as you said, Mr. Parker, we're only getting half the story. We, we need to find out what, what is going, you know, what is actually happening. I believe that the, uh, prohibitate, prohibition, that doesn't sound right, but to extend our, our period of time, I think is important for, for a whole lot of reasons. And then I would say probably the, uh, probationers in, in the sense that why are they dying? Have they gone back to drugs? Have they gone back to something that maybe we could, or they could be helped with while they are under the care, uh, um, and then, uh, pattern and practice, of course, and then, um, Ms. St. Julian's, uh, additional, um, requests, recommendations. That would, that would be my, my order. Okay, all right, who? Mr. Ware?
Medical care for sure, number one for me. And pattern of practices.
Okay. Would you codify what we, yeah, okay.
Uh, yeah, I think for me, um, codifying certainly, it makes logical common sense, right? I mean, these are things in practices that we're already currently doing, uh, that we can, we can certainly throw in there. I think medical, uh, is important, uh, as well. As far as, uh, eliminating the one-year prohibition, I kind of appreciated, um, uh, Vice Chair Pintar's comments about if we are going to do that, we should, we should probably put a lasso around what exactly that's going to look like before we just say we're going to eliminate it, uh, specifically for our, our staff. So, so that, you know, investigation workload, how many investigations would that increase us by? Uh, I, I want to make sure we're going to give everyone the due just time that they deserve. Every case needs that. So, you know, before I would put that on my priority list, I'd like to know kind of what that would look like if we did, um, you know, at least for me. Um, so those are, that's kind of my, my thoughts at this time.
Okay.
First of all, I want to, uh, give my condolences to, um, the families that are suffering because they do not get the answers that they've been looking for. Definitely want to codify. And, um, definitely the medical. Yes. Those would be my top two.
Thank you, Pastor Springs.
Yes, can I share? I agree with what has been shared, and I also just want to lip, um, what was proposed by San Diego's for justice. I think that we're hearing a lot of support from community members and especially those but from those families who are experiencing, um, where, where the system has failed. Um, and I just wanted to share appreciation with their presence here because I think that it really is an opportunity to collaborate. But I highly agree with, with the medical personnel jurisdiction expansion. It is important because I, I do think that we're not really seeing the bigger picture as to what's happening, and I think that that could really help us see like what, what are some of the things folks are really dealing with while providing services to those who are incarcerated. Um, the analysis of patterns and practices, I think that that would be highly beneficial for folks, um, in the department um, and the county to themselves as to what's happening with, with folks, um, who are incarcerated and then also who are in the field. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Wilson, you're awfully quiet.
Um, very simple. I, I agree with, uh, Mr. Hayes and priority. I'm in concert with that.
Okay.
Same either.
Same?
Yeah.
So
So to be clear, just so I have it correct, uh, that would be Mr. Hayes, Mr. Wilson, and the good doctor down there. Uh, codify medical in one year. Correct?
All right. Well, to, to be clear on the one year, though, it has
with the lasso around it.
Thank you. Thank you for my analogy. Yeah, thanks to visual. I think it, it applies. And I'm from East County. I'm sorry.
I don't know about that. Okay, so basically, we're pretty much codi, codify medical prohibition. Are those our priorities to get started?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
Second.
Yes, the motion would be to codify, disorder codify, medical prohibition with lassos. That's such a visual. Okay, we have a second one. Any other discussion?
Okay. Eileen Delaney?
Yes.
Ms. Pintar's not here. Pastor Roberts, Jr., yes. Dr. Arlie Brown?
Yes.
Andrew Hayes?
Aye.
Bobby isn't on here. Bonnie Kink?
Yes.
Ariana Federico Mondragon, excuse me.
Yes.
Thank you. Tim Ware?
Yes.
And G.I. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, so my sense would be that let's get these things going. Where I don't want to lose the other ones. I think we need to re, reevaluate them in a, in a period of time. Mr. Parker, six months? Will that, three months? Let's, I, I, my, my goal, our goal, I want to be able to move forward on the medical. I think that's very important in the codify. And, and again, the, the, the lasso item. And I wa, I want to make sure that that's kind of in the pipeline. And then I want to start in the next, uh, group. Is that, does that work for everyone?
Madam Chair, perhaps I might make a recommendation of how to pursue. Uh, perhaps we, we, we set a timeline when we'd bring these back, but in the meantime, we have, uh, a couple members who are interested in working with Mr. Parker more fully on details of how we bring that back, uh, similar to what we did this time. Uh, I'm open to that. I, just a suggestion. We don't have to do that.
No, I think, and you, and you've just, you've just volunteered, volunteered yourself.
I volunteered myself, I understand, but, uh, but I'm happy to be, uh, helpful in the process. I think it was helpful for this meeting.
Correct.
It may be best that we continue that practice.
Okay, that's, that's a very good idea. Do we, we don't need to vote on that, do we? Okay, who would like to, uh, assist Bonnie? Oh, Ms. Kink, sorry. Uh, oh.
I just want to be clear, I am not volunteering you to do that. I'm just, I volunteer myself.
I, I'll be happy to.
Okay, do we, if someone else wants to, please contact Mr. Parker or, uh, Ms. Kink or whatever. And would you like to come back at our next meeting with the times, the dates and all that, and the specifics?
Happy to.
Okay. Does that sound? All right, I want to thank everybody. Again, you know, my condolences, I, I'm, I'm so sorry that you've, you're going through this and um, we will do everything we can to make sure that it doesn't happen to someone else. And with that, um, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Um, and I wish you, I wish you peace.